Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this evening's meeting on Monday, the 7th of April at 7:00 PM. We don't have a fire drill planned this evening, but in the case that there is one, if you could please just ordinarily leave through the doors in which you came at the front or the fire drills probably, that would be amazing. Thank you very much. Apologies for absence, Councilor Dale and Councilor Tyra, I believe.
Councilor Meldrum.
And Councilor Meldrum. And that is everybody. Any declarations of interest this evening? Councilor Fraser?
Big Z.
Okay, and that's a primary interest. Thank you. Any other interests? None. Item four, public participation, which we have 10 minutes allocated for. Would any members of the public like to participate? Yes. The gentleman.
Is this meeting hallway from planning, we're doing this?
No, that was at 6:30, the planning and highways meeting. If you want to raise anything, though, you're very welcome to.
Five weeks ago, come last Thursday, I approached you in here informally, the Councilor Fraser about the public toilets. He said he hoped they'd be open the following week. We're now three weeks past that and still nothing has happened.
Sharon, do you have an update on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm in contact with them. They are still, they were, they put one door on, but they didn't actually include the cash, which was their mistake. So they had to take the, we decided that we would leave the right-hand door as card, but we wanted at least one cash option. So they've had to take that back in to be amended.
Is that right? And one functional then?
Not really, because they're taking all the tiles up and it's quite in a dangerous state. So we can't really open it until they fix it. And the left-hand one is waiting for the card and the cash and the door to be amended.
I think it is quite typical as well. Things never seem to go very smoothly for us. And the gentleman that we'd actually placed the order with and that Sharon had been liaison with on this particular piece of work, actually then left the company. And I think there was not a very, there wasn't a very good crossover communication. So the piece of work that had actually been commissioned, we did have to chase up and recollect all of the information and it hasn't been quite timing.
It's always about 12 pounds, no paper, no public toilets.
Well, some people do use the town hall and people have been using the town hall.
Which I asked, which I asked the Lord Mayor as well, that being, oh, yeah, to put a sign on the toilet. Sign that I could use that toilet there, but you didn't take it up, did you?
No, because unfortunately, it wouldn't always be appropriate when we have highways in and we have private functions for people to come in and use in the facility.
If you had a sign posted to the toilets, they wouldn't have to come in here, would they? They could stay in the alleyway. But you haven't.
Anyway.
Noted.
I'm hoping that we should have the door in within the next 10 days. So it's out of my control. It's in the manufacturers. I really don't have any control over that, I'm afraid.
Mr. Mills, did you have your hand up?
Yes, well, as you, some of you probably know, we're in a meetup Monday group on a Monday here in the town hall. Not many people probably know about it, I'm sure, but it's been going now since October 2018. It's open to all and it's free for everyone. And that was the agreement that was reached with the town council way back in 2018, that we would not pay any hard costs for the use of the roof. We get about 30 people attend and we do not charge anything. People, attendees, provide tea, coffee, biscuits as and when required. Now, obviously, what has now happened is that I've had the email from the client saying that if there is any, well, we're now required to set up and clear away all tables and chairs before and after every meeting. If we can't do that, well, we're going to be asked for a contribution of £12.50 towards the caretaker's wage. That's not possible because we do not have any income as a group. And it's always been free to the attendees at point of delivery. So that's not going to work. I discussed it with the town clerk and Steve Fraser was also in attendance last Tuesday. And I was slightly, well, not surprised to hear that the caretakers are now too busy and therefore they don't have time now to set up and take down what we need each Monday. And I queried what this was and the answer I got was that there's too, too much time pressure on the caretakers due to the new projects and venues, maintenance on them. My answer to that was, surely, as a council, you should have considered that sort of thing before you took on these new projects. My answer was really was that you need a full-time caretaker, an extra one. If that's not the answer, well, please tell me what is. We have our next meeting on next Monday afternoon between 2:00 and 4:00 o'clock. Anyone's welcome to attend. In fact, I'd like to see some of the councillors say to us. The test will be that next Monday in this building, in this room, is the council meeting, again, isn't it? Parish meeting, I'd be like to call it. So if we are not able to take or remove all the tables and chairs as we require, it's all going to come back on me because we won't have done the job properly. It's a lack of communication, isn't it? And I would say that the attendees that we have, I'm probably one of the youngest and I'm 71. There's a lot of people in their 80s and there's some in their 90s, lots of them have health issues. They're not going to help. It's going to be a bit of my wife. And so that you all know, some of you know, I have a hip replacement last February. Now, that meant that between about Easter 23 up until Easter 24, I couldn't have helped to do that anyway. So who's going to do it? No one. Apart from my wife. So there's, and there's three questions that are asked. Sorry, I didn't realise, but what's doing the setting and clearing up of the tables, et cetera? Are the individuals involved, in fact, me and my wife, probably, talking about, are we covered by, for insurance purposes, public liability and personal injury? Covered ourselves and how we leave the room if there's any problem with the table and someone is injured? Is that down to us or are we covered by the council?
Do you want me to answer that one now?
No, I hope, but there are other things. Surely, the answer is, and this is going to explode, as I've said before next Monday, is that each and every time there's a meeting here, which there always is on the following Tuesday morning, sometimes I'll remember who it is, because on a Tuesday morning, there's a heritage group meeting, so we. But if we're not told how we need to leave the room, I mean, do we have to clean all the tables and chairs away simply for them to be guy again on a Tuesday morning? Do we do it again? Not really, is it? I wouldn't have thought to. That's common sense not to, is it?
I know that, yeah, I know that. Do you want to say your third question?
Well, it's, and will, without exception, all the groups be subject to these new charges? Because I honestly don't believe that, and I understand that you've already discussed this with groups like the WR. Well, unless my understanding in WR is completely wrong, I would be surprised that there's many active members that could actually be involved in this week in, week out. I might be wrong.
Okay.
It needs a lot more thought than I think it's been given.
Well, we have been thinking about it for some time. The problem that I'm having, which I could explain, was that I'm finding it difficult to retain caretakers because the, their responsibility first and foremost is to clean and maintain the building. The setting up that they've done for years has always been a courtesy to the groups. But we're finding that when they need to come back, for instance, they'll come in early in the morning about 6:30. They then are asked to come back on the day that they work. They're asked to come back perhaps in the afternoon, then perhaps in the evening. And the impact on their own personal lives is such that they really can't sustain that. We've been lucky with some of the caretakers that we have had because they are able to do that. But for instance, at the moment, I have only got one caretaker. The one that was supposed to start didn't start, so we kind of had a wait of three weeks for that person to start. Then they decided they weren't going to. So something has to give and my priority is to keep the building clean and well-maintained. And the things that do have to give, unfortunately, are things like the courtesy setup that we've done. So try to find a solution to that. And already in the hire agreement, when we have private parties, there is an option in the hire agreement. If a party does want us to set up for them, we do make a charge of £12.50. So that is nothing new. But what we've done is we've had to approach the groups that we have already. Would you be prepared to make that charge? Would you be prepared to accept that charge? So that we have one group that are willing to just come in and set up for themselves and sit down. The others are willing to pay. So I did suggest to you, although you say that there isn't really a possibility, I did ask you to consider that perhaps your members would make a 50p each contribution towards the setup. And then that might be a solution, which, you know, the impact on them, if you've never charged them either and we've never charged you, that is one possibility. The other thing that I am quite aware of is that the tables and the chairs, the tables are quite mobile. Chairs, I agree, are very heavy. So what I did say was, I, like they have at Connaught Hall, we bring in some lighter chairs that are fold up, that you could bring out on a trolley. They are so much lighter and easier to manage. So there was a number of things that we have thought that we should do in order to mitigate the impact that it is going to have on the groups.
A big man, as I am. If I say to someone or a group of people, whatever I'm doing, I will do a new charge. I will stick to that and that's what I have been saying since October 2018. What you must understand, everyone here, is that in fact, at that point in time, we were about 18 months away from COVID. And I would argue that I was setting up what we did on a Monday afternoon in October 2018. We were about, yeah, two years because it was 2020 winter. When things like warmovers became the norm, which this was one of, or we preempted that or started our group then.
Yeah, and you do a very good job and no one's disputing that. But I've still got to manage my staff. And, and as I've explained, you know, that courtesy, unfortunately, we have to have a rethink. Sometimes circumstances are such that you have to make adjustments. And that was the only way I could think of, obviously trying to retain the groups, but coming to a solution that most of the groups were quite surprised about. I wouldn't say some of them took it that well, but some of them did. And they immediately said, yes, okay, that's fine, we can set up. Because in any other village hall and town hall, any community centre, when you hire a venue, you are expected to set up for yourself anyway and sit down. And you are supposed to leave the room as you found it. So what I'm asking groups to do is nothing that any other village hall isn't doing. Unfortunately, we might, we've had to lose that courtesy, which is unfortunate. But I don't know how I'm going to attract a new caretaker, so.
Sharon, could we just, perhaps, I know the council has already taken a view on this because obviously when we last done our hire agreements, we included the setup and sit-down. Could we just maybe at the next general purpose finance committee meeting, having a general eye on just to review the practicality of it, where it affects clubs and groups such as meetup Monday?
The test, the test will be next Monday.
Well. Is that, is that? It is. I would just say, though, I really am going to find it difficult to retain caretakers if, if we continue on as we are.
But we can do a number crunch, can't we, and look at, you know, how many times in that period our caretakers are having to come in and we can actually look at the diary and work out all of the patterns of behaviour and how much it's actually costing the council in that support as well. But I think if we can have it so it's like a really measured, like, debate, I think that would be beneficial.
Yeah, I think volunteers are worth their weight in gold and we don't want to create a barrier to a group existing. So I think the reviewers, kind of said, it's a market to do.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mills, for coming and addressing us this evening. Any other takers? I know we're now getting a little bit steep into the meeting, but I guess.
Yeah, the council now appears to have two different YouTube channels. You've got Atwood Town Council 9233, which is the original one. That's got 170,000 subscribers and 158 videos. But you've now started a new channel, which is Atwood Town Council, which has two subscribers and nine videos. All the videos on that one, which are those recent videos, are all really, really low quality. You can't see anything, can you? Are you able to sort of get this reconciled so they're all in one place and of an acceptable quality? Because they used to be live streaming and that's now gone to pre-recorded. But now the pre-recorded are very low quality and split across different channels, which makes it clearly very difficult for public to identify and find these. The original channel, which is one label 9233, has got the green logo with the badge. The new one, the one with two subscribers and the recent videos, has no logo. Just, no one's going to find it.
Okay, I've just had an email through from, via, that's not Dalton. I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. But we'll have to go deeper into that. We suspect, we think it's because we changed over the laptop. And so, and it could be that we changed over the email that was related to it. I don't know.
Someone, someone, someone has set up two separate YouTube channels or two separate addresses. That's.
Yeah, I think it's to do with the new email, but we look at the quality. I need to spend some time on that, maybe with our tech guy. And just see if we can get that right. But yeah, yeah, we are aware of it, though, Mr. Smith.
Lovely. Thank you, Count.
There is an opportunity for public participation again at the end of the meeting, but I am going to move on just because I'm thinking we're half an hour into the, into the designated meeting time now, although I do appreciate that 10 minutes makes time. Next on the agenda then, we have item five, which is minutes of the town council meeting on the 3rd of March 2025. Can I please have any amendments or a proser and second of their acceptance? Councilor Susa says that proposal. Thank you. Councilor Thwaites seconded and a show of hands, please. That's carried by majority. Was that an extension, Councilor Reynolds?
It was in present.
So was that for extensions? Next on the agenda, we have item six, financial matters. Item A to authorize payments. Don't go far. Does anyone have any queries? Not?
Yes, the, the at how has been split, I see, for the church form. And you reason you split that?
It wasn't.
Church Hall.
The church hall.
Church Hall, is it the church hall?
I think they wanted a payment upfront.
Okay, fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If there's no other queries, can I please have a proser for the acceptance of those payments? Councilor Dalton, seconded by Councilor Reynolds, and a show of hands. That's unanimous. Councilor Fraser, you can come back.
No, John.
It was obviously going far. Item six B, to agree direct debits. Any comments? Proposal? I've got a proposal from Councilor Dalton and a second from Councilor Reynolds and a show of hands, please. That's unanimous. Thank you. To receive income for acceptance and approval. Councilor Westby to propose, seconded by Councilor Dalton and a show of hands. That's carried as well. Thank you. Petty cash is for information. Do we have any queries? No, none. Same with income expenditure. No, no queries. Item six F, the additional signatories for the bank accounts. We were going to ask Councilor Dalton and Councilor Wingfield. Councilor Wingfield isn't here. I don't know if it would be appropriate to do it in his absence. But I had a quiet word with Councilor Ashby once we've received those apologies. And he is happy to be a signatory. So could I please have a proser for Councilor Dalton and Councilor Ashby? And a second, please. So a proser, I'll take Councilor One and a second, I'll take Councilor Susa and a show of hands. Yes.
I'll abstain because I'm part of it.
That's carried to extension. You can vote for yourself. It's fine. Item six G, request to ATC to contribute a sum towards the business awards cost for acceptance and approval.
I've just got some, just some costings, if you want to pass that just down and have a look. It just takes into consideration some very simplistic costs, which are, they're seven sponsor categories. And pricing the tickets at £55 a head, so that's the income sources. The founder has, wants to approach the town council to see if they would contribute some of money. Looking at the expenditure sources, hotel costs includes a meal, which is a three-course meal for £100 and a reception drink. That expenditure is £5,500. The brochure is £7.50 and the host will cost £1,000. So there is a shortfall of £1,400. We have got a headline sponsor now, so I could actually reduce that deficit because it would be £600 a table. And then the headline sponsor is going to pay £1,000. So I could actually reduce that to £1,000.
Oh, because I'll be paying six plus the four?
Yes, yes, yeah. So that, that information only came in today and I'd already printed these off, so. So.
Well, it's kind of been a joint project, so between Atwood Town Council and Jos, the hotelier that owns Chapel House. So he's started the business awards in Thetford and Peterborough that have been quite successful in promoting their local businesses and, you know, really trying to give some recognition to their high street. And it's only the small, medium enterprises that wouldn't be, you know, chains.
Independents.
Independent.
Can you speak up, please?
Oh, sorry, my microphone is on.
We have to press it.
Is it on? Oh, it's on. Um. Yeah. So.
So what's he ask?
£1,000 contribution. Councilor S Taylor?
I'm not going to participate in a vote, just in case I decide that my business might want to take, participate. But I had actually some really interesting conversations with the gentleman that's running this massive inception. Quite enlightening seeing the information that he, he was passing on. Nick does seem like he could benefit.
I will say, the launch event, I attended in the capacity of chairman of the council and town mayor, and it was actually, it was very well attended by local businesses. And ones that actually have a presence on the high street and some of the market traders that are out-of-home businesses registered in out-of-home and our residents as well. And, yeah, there seemed to be a lot of support from the community behind this initiative.
You're invited.
Yes. Is there, can I take a proser and a second then for, to commit a sum of £1,000 towards the business awards costs? Is that proposal, Councilor Reynolds? Seconded by Councilor Dalton. And can I take a show of hands, please? Thank you, with one extension.
Two.
Two extensions. And next on the agenda then, we have item six H, which is quotations for cleaning and restoration of the warm monument. This is for ratification. Members would have received this information by now already. And so can I please have just a proser to ratify if it's choice? And that's Councilor Reynolds, seconded by Councilor Ashby, and a show of hands, please. And I think that's unanimous. I definitely thank you. Next on the agenda this evening, we have item seven, correspondence, Chapel Green School consultation to increase number of people cases. Does anyone have any comments? No, no comments. No comments.
Presumably, we can comment individually.
Yes, yes, yeah, thank you. But nothing collective. Then we have item eight, which is the summer carnival variation to original agreement for consideration and resolution. Members should have had the correspondence from their meeting packs.
I have got a copy, if you want to pass it through, that is a copy of the existing premises licence, which I'll just put that one here, if you want to have a full packet. If you look at.
I thought the correspondence was in the meeting pack, Sharon, but I think you just sent it to me separately, didn't you? I've had a copy of the correspondence between yourself and.
I think I sent out a separate email with it. I sent out a separate email. Yeah, but I have got that email in front of me. It's sort of like just a string of emails between myself and the, the contact, if you like. But I think the two, the two things that I'm asking you to consider, or that they are asking you to consider is, which is extra, is the beer festival. I think it's a beer festival, though. In some of the correspondence, it's mentioned as a tent, but it's also mentioned to me that, which is why I've given you a copy of the licence. When you look at the plan, where you have to, you have to adhere to that. And there's just two, there's two tables in the corner where the beer for beer and can be sold. So I needed to clear you that because if you vary that, you're breaking the premises licence. So, and also there's an extra day as well.
Yeah, so the premises licence won't come back anyway, would it?
No, that's the trouble. So. But on the alcohol consumption, Saturday and Sunday, and it says seasonal variations, which are mentioned as specifically ladies day.
And members, I've just had a member of the public raise their hand. Would we, would we be happy to break the standard order so that they can participate? So that's Councilor Tristan Ashby, seconded by Councilor Dalton, and a show of hands, please. That's unanimous. Yes, if you'd like to speak.
Hi there. My name's Elizabeth Taylor. I am part of the Aspen Carnival Committee. And I believe one of the gentlemen from the committee, Michael, has been talking to Sharon. And I know there were some questions, so I just thought if I could come and maybe answer some of them with you personally rather than, I know it's a bit of a struggle over email sometimes. So I know you had asked for a field plan. And so I've managed to get them to do a field plan over the weekend. And we've got a rough risk assessment as well, if you would like them. Obviously, we haven't gone as far as the liability insurance at this stage because we want to make sure that we've got everything within the event covered. And so would you like me to pass these around? Is that okay? Would you like to see that?
Well, we can't really.
That's okay.
I think, I think as long as a copy is submitted by the office.
Submitted, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
That would be appropriate. Thank you.
No problems. But I know, obviously, Sharon, you'd asked about the beer fest, the tent. Yeah. Obviously, we had also requested a copy of the licence so that we could make sure that we were adhering to that. But we haven't received that as yet and Brentford Council explained that I needed to get that from you.
Okay, the thing is that my next job is to look at the, I've got to review the premises licence because that's what the council have asked me to do. So I was kind of reluctant to, to give you a copy of that at the moment because we needed to wind up what your requirements are first.
Yeah.
And then I need to look, I've already been through it with the licensing officer and we've made notes, et cetera. Some of the conditions that are on there, she, she felt as if they should be part of a risk assessment rather than part of premises licence. So it's more involved from my end than it probably is from your end. You're doing all your arrangements. But I'm looking at it from a licensing point of view because I want to make sure that, you know, every event that we have on there is going to adhere to what, this is the current licence. And you're more than welcome to have a look at. And you're more than welcome to have a look at it, but that may well become, be amended if you like.
I mean, we just want to make sure that we are covering whatever the licence means.
Yeah.
And we don't have any intention of moving the bar from the location that it's been for the last ten to twenty years. And the basics of the, the field plan are very similar from where the staging, this is away from the housing and the bar being beside the stage. And what we're trying to do is, from a risk assessment point of view, we've requested that people aren't bringing their own alcoholic drinks on site so that there's no, there's less risk of glass being on site. And which is why we were looking at extending the alcohol offering.
Yeah.
With a, a larger selection of ales.
Yeah, and also I think in our correspondence, it was mentioned that you've, you've already had, that the police have said they're happy with the event. I haven't seen any correspondence.
No, we're waiting for, PCD on Phillips said he was going to email you to say that he was happy. We've had email correspondence and a face to face with him. And he's happy with the event as it's proposed. And we will have security on site as normal across what we're hoping will be the Friday, Saturday and Sunday to a proportion. And the reason we've requested to add the Friday is because we've dropped the ticket price this year. Because we're aware that the cost of living crisis and people aren't getting out as much. So we're hoping that by dropping the ticket prices, it makes it open for more people. But then by taking it on on a Friday, we can offer a different type of music on the Friday to the Saturday so that it brings in more people.
You see, the trouble is, when you've said the Friday, that isn't even on the premises licence.
I, I think there's two questions, I think the first question is, are we going to authorise the beer festival? Because I think the authorisation that we gave at the previous meeting was for Park and Carnival and the beer, the request to hold a beer festival on our open space wasn't included. So I think that particular item will need to give up consideration too. And then the second part, I think, is actually whether or not the premises licence is used or whether or not a ten is required. I'll come to councillor S Taylor first.
And you have sort of just covered it and I was just going to say as far as I'm concerned, our licence doesn't permit a Friday. But I do, so people will be charged to go onto the field on Friday as well. It's not going to be free, there'll be nothing free for this honour at all.
So we're working on lots of free activities during the event. It's reduced ticket prices on the Friday. I believe eight pounds on the Friday, ten pounds on the Saturday and two pounds for the carnival. But we're working on a large array of free.
So I, I just think that it's unfortunate that we've got to a stage where actually we gave permission and actually wasn't presented with what was intended. And I think that that goes for all groups, I think it happens quite regularly to us as a councillor in, in general, that not everybody, when they come and ask, is forthcoming with all of the details. And that could have, this could have actually been avoided if a clearer show of intent was given when the request was put in to use the field. Not just a blanket, can we have it from this day to this day? I think if we'd have been given all of the information at that point, it would have saved us here and the concerns about the licence because it doesn't cover. And I think we do also need to be extremely mindful of, social media is a great platform for people wanting to whinge and complain. And last year there was quite a lot of complaining that families couldn't actually access the fairground because they were being charged to go on the field. And now that's another day, the field's going to be in out of action and a fee will be implemented for people to get on to. And I think like that's so, could have been avoided if we were given that information at the beginning.
I would, I will say, I think the two pounds for carnival day is very modest. Following on from that. I mean, I think we should take this in two parts. So the first part would be, are members happy for, to approve the request that a beer festival is held on the recreation ground? To make a three day event opposed to a two day event? If so, can I please have a proposer?
There's a lot, and a live music event, it's not just a beer festival, it's more live music we're giving permission to. So I think that proposal, that, that proposal, it needs to be different because obviously the ladies just said that we're intending to put more live music on the field on Friday night and residents need to be considered.
Councillor Jay Taylor?
Not forgetting the residents in the same time, often in crime, to have music on carnival weekends. We must be careful there.
We do usually ticket those guys with free tickets in that area.
There are two or three of them down there, I personally, because I'm chairman for a while. They're all just, they just don't want no noise at all. And friendships, just don't hurt them because they try many times.
Does anyone have any thoughts? Councillor Susa?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great idea for the community, I think you're doing a great job. With an extra day with concessions and reduced rates is a, is a good idea. Obviously, take councillor John Taylor's point of the noise. And if that can be looked at, then, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we've had music there before.
Yeah, it's just normally it's a two day event, this year it'll be a three day event.
It's from five PM on this Friday.
Councillor Dalton?
As far as I'm concerned, the extra day shouldn't really be a problem. Yes, as long as the residents are aware that this is going to happen, it's once a year. We need to sell the town better.
Yeah, okay. Councillor Susa?
I was just going to say, I'm happy for it to go ahead, but I would like those residents of Feathlane and Arling Gardens to be consulted. So I'm happy to, from Liman Re, say, I support the Friday as long as we take on board any comments from the residents in that area. Because I do think it's okay saying it's only once a year, but when it's the whole weekend, that, that for those residents, it's okay for us that don't live there and can't hear it. But the whole weekend, one night and one afternoon, that you use is one thing, but two nights and an afternoon, that is somebody's whole weekend.
I, I think, I think it would be fair maybe to seek their feedback afterwards when we obviously look ahead to next year's event. Might be an easier way to do it, given the time space that we have. And so if your intention is to approach those households in turn, if you could just ask them to, you know, give feedback, that would be, that would be appreciated. Councillor Reynolds?
Yeah, just on the tickets, like a family, do they get discount rate for family or is it blanket nine pound?
Children's rates are, are less, so under fives are free. And then it's half price for up to, I think it's sixteen, but it's possibly eighteen.
Okay.
Mine is just an observation, if we're basing the licence on that plan, it's wrong. That needs to go back to Breckland, there are numerous properties missing off that.
There was.
Numerous properties missing off that, mine being one of them.
That's very old plan then.
Yeah.
So I think I had a proposal from councillor Susa, can I have a second to that proposal? Please councillor Ashby, a show of hands. That is carried, one extension, one extension, thank you very much. The second part is then the licence. So this licence doesn't permit a three day event. And what it does do is, means that the town council, if there is touch wood, there won't be any problems. It's our licence, ultimately, we are liable and responsible. What I personally feel would be more appropriate is if the carnival committee get a ten, they're only about twenty pounds, twenty one pounds. Twenty one pounds from Breckland Council and you can have a ten that covers a three day event in one application. And, and I do think that that would just probably be a little bit more responsible for us. And councillor S Taylor?
I support that because then any breach is someone I think is actually on there and there's no comeback on the town council.
Yeah.
So any legal liability will fall on the carnival committee and the person that buys for that ten, so I'm happy.
And that is quite common practice, so I know the Fun Fest team, when they host events on our open spaces, they always put in a ten themselves. So I would like to make that proposal, those tenors used as opposed to our premises licence. I've got a second then from councillor Ashby and a show of hands please. Thank you and thank you for your work and good luck with your event. And next on the agenda this evening, we have item nine, which is reports from town district and county councillors. If anyone would like to give a brief report on relevant information.
All goings, they seem to do our district one all the time. So this month we've had an extra meeting in March to look forward to Breckland's response to the reorganization of local government, I think it was reported in the press. So I hope that everybody's read that and maybe residents could understand our response to that. I've had, we've had extra licensing training at district level and I've had a licensing catch up with the team, which is a monthly ongoing thing, as the vice chairman of the licensing authority. And also myself and councillor T Taylor, last Monday afternoon, attended a multi-agency meeting at the police station with some residents that are suffering from some antisocial behaviour issues. And I think it was quite a positive meeting and hopefully we look forward to some better scenarios and stuff and working, coming out and we've organised another one in three months' time, twelve months' time. Yeah, that's a brief district of day.
Any other takers? No, I won't give a challenge report this evening because I'm mindful that we have our annual parish meeting in two weeks' time. And I don't want to sound like Breckland Record or duplicate anything that I'm going to say, so I'll save it for then. And any other takers before we move on? Adam?
One week, one week's time.
Oh, next Monday, yes, one week, that's okay, my apologies. Next Monday, annual parish meeting at the town hall at seven o'clock. And then next on the agenda, we have item ten, which is the parks report, Sharon, if you may.
Okay, I have, well, it should be on the website, if it's not on there, I will put that on tomorrow. So the arch, the slots for youth provision for groups to use it are filling up nicely. There will be a new group operating on a Saturday. And it's a creative send session. And also the Benjamin Foundation will be operating on a Tuesday, Wednesday and a Thursday at various points in the day. The Royal British Legion Youth Division will be taking up space as well as the boxing club, but the days have got to be firmed up. And also I am told that the old acuity club will also be resuming. The Benjamin Foundation have now engaged their staff fully and they will be starting once the DBS approvals are through. So we're hoping to get a start date towards the end of April, hopefully the week after next would be good. Then the neighbourhood plan review public consultation was sort of reported on at the planning highways meeting. But just to say that most of the questionnaires have been analysed, there's just some hard copies to be analysed. But we don't believe that they will affect the overall comp, sort of like analysis. But just to say that it was really quite refreshing that eighty eight percent of the questionnaires were filled out by young people. And that was because we, we sent a link to the questionnaire, online questionnaire to the academy. And we've got some really good sensible answers with very, very good, excellent suggestions. So it was really lovely to see. We also got well over five hundred responses online and we've got another thirty to analyse. So, so we're really pleased with that and we're hoping now that some draft policies or a review with amendments or maybe possibly new policies will be suggested. Town hall improvements, the new kitchen, as some of you would have seen, is mostly complete and should be fully stocked and usable by next week. The painting of the ground floor is progressing well and our decorator has worked around all of the other refurbishments that are going on, so it's been really cooperative. And the chambers in the bar flooring will be put down from the first of May. The main entrance automation is almost complete, should, should have actually been completed today, but the wiring just needs to be programmed in. Our head groundsman has left the council, so we have, are going to be doing an assessment of current workloads and patterns to ascertain what our future staffing needs will be. Bearing in mind the new areas that the town council is taking on. Spring mowing has begun again and the locations for two new benches on Norwich Road have been approved by Norfolk Highways. And also there will be three benches going in on London Road. We have the benches in, so it's just a matter of installing those, so you'll see those in various positions. The new mag lock on the wheel park on the recreation ground is now in operation and it, it does automatically lock at nine o'clock at night and it opens at nine o'clock in the morning. The events working group, we've produced a calendar of events that you can see on the website to let you know what events are taking place in the town. They are all groups, not just the town council's events, so it's in date order, so you kind of see what's coming up, which is quite useful. And also to say that the introduction evening of the small and medium business enterprise awards took place on twenty first of March. Hosted by what's going to be, he's going to be called the founder of the Atalborough Awards. It was well attended and pledges to sponsor tables have been made. The annual town assembly, as we've just mentioned, is next Monday. And the mayoral civic reception was held on Saturday. The community cafe soup, signpost and support continue to be very well attended and we are told they're highly valued by residents as a way of preventing social isolation, ensuring a warm nutritious meal as well as accessing advice and financial help. It's estimated that nearly sixteen hundred, that figure might have gone up by then, has been distributed to residents from the Household Health Support Fund, which comes from Breckland Council. The footfall counters, you may have noticed, if you're very observant, two cameras are up, one outside the Nationwide and one outside the each character shop. They are there to assist with counting footfall in and out of the town. And the data will be used to improve town's visitor numbers and gauge any extra needs the town may have for shops, facilities and traffic movements. And also you may have seen, we've got our new wayfinding signage, finger posts and maps dotted around the town as well to sort of help visitors find out where the facilities are. And the town markets are continuing to thrive. Charter market is every Thursday, eight thirty till two, farmer's market is the first Saturday of the month, nine till one. And we have the makers market coming through on the third Saturday of every month, also nine to one. And just to say, our councillors have been very cooperative and have, some have agreed to go on training and also to have DBS checks where they are working voluntarily in groups. So they're going to be undergoing DBS, safeguarding, first aid and food hygiene. So we have had takers for most of those.
Thank you, Sharon. And as Sharon says, her report will be available on the website. And if you don't mind Sharon, I'm just going to add a couple of things to this, which is that actually it was really refreshing. I'm not sure if it's a good thing or a bad thing that we need the extra help, but I was told that actually through the support with the household support fund applications at both the community caf and at the day centre, at St Mary's Church, I've actually received the majority of that funding compared to the other market towns. And so I do feel like we were quite proactive in offering that support. And it is really, well, I'm pleased that, you know, the people that needed it were able to be supported in that way. And also our makers market that's coming up, I think so far we have twenty confirmed attendees, so that should be very good. Thank you very much, Sharon. Next we have item eleven, eleven, which is the date of the annual general meeting on the twelfth of May, twenty twenty five, that's for information. Item twelve, calendar, meeting calendar for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, again, that is for information. Do we have any comments? No. Item thirteen, public participation, again, we have a ten minute allocation, would any members of the public like to participate? Would any members of the public like to participate? Okay, moving on. Oh, yes?
Yeah, hi, thank you. At February meeting, I asked about the payments that were listed on your income, which were misuse of mobile phone.
Oh, yes.
I asked what the total amount was, how it was allowed to occur, what safeguards were in place to ensure it didn't happen again. The camera, Sharon replied, there were four installments of 25 pounds for me to have paid, but you were unable to determine the actual amount. So I've had a look and so far you've had 12 100 pound payments. So that's 1,200 pounds. Now, is that the total amount over, is there more? How was it allowed to happen? And what safeguards were in place to ensure that it doesn't happen again? Because 1200 pounds is a lot of money for someone who's misused.
Yeah. We had a, a member of staff who wasn't particularly au fait with how mobile phones should work. We, all we know is that somehow the data that they used was continually running. We don't, we can't tell you what, sort of, you could only tell you what was on the app. There wasn't anything unusual, it's just that there was, must have been something that was running that BT couldn't actually tell us, you know, they couldn't pin it down to any one particular app or whatever.
If I, if I may as well, Sharon, actually if I'm wrong, but the misuse was over a very short period of time, not a prolonged period of time.
No, no.
And it was quite a substantial cost in a short period that was then identified and addressed immediately and then caps were put on the data usage to prevent it from happening again.
Yeah, yeah.
So what is the total amount?
The total amount that we've asked that person to pay, I will have to get that to you, sorry.
Could you please, because two months ago you said you wouldn't.
Sorry, yeah, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? No, okay, moving on. We have the items for the next agenda, I've got none off the top of my head as always.
It's, it's not necessarily an item for the next agenda, but it is something that I would just like to address and ask anyone sat in the room or any members or even a clerk. Obviously, next month I will be taking over the role of chairman as Breckland District Council and I am able to sponsor a local charity, choose a chairman's charity. So if any residents have any suggestions for any charity, preferably outdoor based or very closely that our residents benefit from, I would really appreciate some suggestions. Anybody has any, or if anyone comes at the table, come put some forward, please.
Why did I ask a chapel to be put on?
Oh, will that be going to open spaces? Yes.
It would, wouldn't it? That's fine, sorry, I haven't been very well asked.
Perfect. Well, thank you for coming tonight, everybody. It's refreshing to see so many people in the public gallery. We are now going to move forward to the exclusion of the present public, but thank you so much for your attendance this evening. Do I have a proposal for that? Councillor Flates and the second round, councillor Welland and a show of hands, that is unanimous. Thank you so much.